Good evening, everybody. Today is December 12th, 2022. This is the regular council meeting of the Mayor and Council Borough of Flemington. This meeting is being called for some reason for provisions of the open public meetings law. This meeting of December 12th, 2022 was included in the listed meetings that this center has had a count of Democrat anchor reviews in January 5th, 2022. But some of those were awarded for a long that day and have remained continuously votes as required. In addition, a copy of the study decision has been available for the public that is on file in the office of the borough clerk. We could all rise to the pleasure of
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Wong?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Zeddy?
Here.
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Okay, we'll start with my final major to credit by defending the citizens of Flemington for the honor of serving you the past five years for your just mayor. I really enjoyed being a mayor and I think I accomplished a whole lot quite a bit. Before I get into a couple of planning board appointments in the Borough Health Committee appointments, I do want to give a shout out to Congressman Malowski. Also rounding up his second term, he was not reelected. We were awarded in the water infrastructure bill through the Department Army Corps of Engineers, $4.5 million in water infrastructure, which will be able to spend over the next couple of years, presumably on wells and other infrastructure investments. That's a huge amount of money. And I know Congressman Malowski worked very hard for that for us. I worked very hard, but thank you, get it in there as well. And I'm happy to know that that is, has been awarded to the borough as we head out. Some of my accomplishments I want to talk about, the Union Hotel across the street, you see that coming up. We got that over the finish line. This council got it over the finish line, went 44 Main Street to Philly State, that on the tax code, it was a pretty rapid by me in there. The street state got finished, infrastructure, Elwood Highland Avenue got finished, Dewey Avenue got finished. Topley Avenue is currently under way and there will be more work going in there. Coming up, actually with funding coming on for redevelopment agreements that will presumably be approved this evening. We got the process started to relocate the police to badly needed facilities. Single road, half of its game right now and only getting better. One of the first ordinance that I did as mayor in Quay Plaza was the water ordinance reform. Prior to me becoming mayor, water allocations in this borough were given out as political candy and political favors. Then people would sit on that water allocation for years sometimes. We ended that process when I came in. And so when water, water is allocated to a project, you've got a certain amount of time. And then it's usually lose it, you know, by holding on to it without selling that water or water utility is of course in the business of selling water. And when water allocations are held on to without being used, that is depriving our water utility of much needed funding. And so we were able to return that funding to those as well. We've been working the past four years on revitalization of areas in town that have been vacant and an eye for a decade that will return those to the taxpayers, paying money that they should be paying. Now up at the north end of town, those properties up there do not pay enough to even cover the top one police officer. And so when those properties are developed, that will add to the tax base of the town and that would be good for the residents and property owners of this town as well. Our first cannabis center should be opening soon. It did receive site plan approval, that's creating a planning board for recreational. And now they are simply waiting on the C M R C to cannabis regular board permission to give their final approval and it will be open as well. I'd like to thank the members of council and district this year and over the past years as well. I'd like to especially thank our employees of this borough. We are a small borough and they do incredible work. Many of our employees have multiple shot titles. And the fact that they pull it off every week is quite amazing. And most importantly, thank you to the volunteers who make this borough work. Our, our community is, functions on the labor of volunteers. And for those of you who volunteer and give your time to your community, thank you very much. The planning board appointment Susan Engelhardt has resigned that is Wednesday from planning board. She will not be able to serve as a class member as an elected member of the governing body. So I am elevating Trent Levitt to finish out Susan's fair and that will expire at the end of 2023. That is effective on Wednesday as well to align with the date of Susan's resignation. Trent did resign from the all two seat in order to accept the last fourth fee. So I'll be appointing Dan Echol into alternate two seat replacement. And also I'm appointing Dennis Stowe to alternate work position and that will expire at the end of 2023. On the environmental committee, I appoint Trent Levitt for a three-year term that expires at the end of 2024. Jeff Hand for a two-year term expiring end of 2023. And Jay Poff for a two-year term expiring end of 2023 as well. Additionally, I do believe there's a couple of alternate seats and I'm appointing Dan Ann Alstax to a two-year term as alternate on the environmental committee. And again, thank you for the honor of serving you for the fact of matters. I appreciate that. And, and we will move on from that. And then we'll move on to our council comments. We'll start with the Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't come to school.
Thank you. Congressman Parker?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I actually was invited to a ribbon cutting for the reopening of the Dunkin' Donuts on 202 and the travel. And what was actually really, really nice is that they actually donated a thousand dollars for, to the Y for some camp. Speaking of the Y, as I, as I was there, I talked to the people from the Y. I find out what they're trying to do is get this community to full up and running here in Flemington, which I really have very hard time understanding. Why Flemington keeps neglecting itself? And I'm an outsider looking in. I've been here for seven years, but it's just baffling. So one of the things that I think as council and as the community is that we need to get that open. We need to do whatever we can. There's a bunch that are open. I actually reached out to them and said, you know what? I'll do whatever I can to help with fundraising, whether it's coming up with some creative ideas. You know, I know some, some people in the, the entertainment world and whatever the case may be, but I'm going to go every resource I can to get that open. And I expect everybody in the community to be the same, because that's a call to action. That's not something that maybe it's nice to have. It's something that must be had. There are a lot of kids that spend the summer here, have nothing to do in a community pool in the lot. And we need to do the right things by these kids, because that's why they're having problems. The other thing is I posted a dinner for, I had said that I had met a lot of public officials during the legislative conference. I actually hosted some of them for dinner at my house a couple of weeks, about a week ago. And it was really to understand what's going on in this. It's really to understand what's going on in small communities, because I don't, I'm not a small community guy. Came from the city and then I moved to small community. I mean, I went to high school in Princeton, but then I graduated. And then went to college and grew up mostly in the city. However, that said, it's a different education for those of us who have moved into a small town. And I'm actually seeing the politics, how different they are in a small town. And so I wanted to take your brain, find out like how we can join forces and take some of the best practices from them to implement here, because a lot of these guys are in small towns as well. And it's been very high on me. I'm really looking forward to, to next year. I am very determined. And Betsy, I will thank you for actually, well, I don't know, thank you or curse me for giving me a problem. But, but, but you were instrumental in asking me and you and a couple of other people asked me to the service engine and it opened my eyes to this call to action. Because when you're asked to serve a political thing, I can hear my dad in the back of my head, because my dad is, my family's very much a politics. That I can hear from the back of my head saying, you gotta do this. So, and I'm really glad that I have. And Betsy, I, I, I do see what you've been through. I do see what you've done. I really appreciate the trajectory you did. You know, I'm never, I'm never a yes man and I'm always going to challenge. And I appreciate the fact that we can have that conversation. So thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, my councilwoman Jessica.
Thank you, Mayor. On Friday, January 13th, 2023, from 10 a.m. to 1 a.m., Lowe's and Happtep Perk Humanity will be building garden beds for the community garden. We're looking for volunteers for that day. So you can email me, it's Flemington Borough, the whole word spelled out, communitygarden@gmail.com if you're interested. This is my last council meeting, so I'm very cool with that. I truly enjoyed working with you all. Hours were not great, but the minutes were great. So what I'm most proud of during my time was the working police group that I did with Council President Wong. We had a lot of really great conversations with people whose voice are not normally heard. So I, you know, we still have a long way to go, but I, I think that was a good starting point. With my free time next year, I plan on getting any garden up and running and also helping with citizen engagement as an environment. So, thank you.
Okay, next up is Council President Jeremy Wong.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. A couple of things. I have some police numbers to make. So this is the data from the police department and these numbers are representative of January until last month of November. Calls and services, 37,000, 558. We had 357 were reviewed and crashed. We had 376 violations, 121 arrests. And 2,511 were beaten and assaulted. This is kind of a mirror review. And as always, if you see something, please say something and call 911. If you feel it's an emergency state and contact us right away. I'm sorry, send contact number, right? Or call the nonemergency number 918-713-4444. So F C P news, F C P and partnership activities are in full swing, bringing customers to Flemington for holiday events. Each event is designed to emphasize shopping locally and visiting our stores and restaurants and all three businesses. For a day sheet, sangar, some pumpkin fish, and a chocolate bar. Our standard events on H B and Saturday night, 12 events have had close to 100, I'm sorry, 1,000 reservation for the summer. Our window decorating contest currently has 300 online votes. In last year, we had opposed to, we had opposed to 1,000 by the end of the year. F C P has printed 5,000 holiday passports that show all of the borough's retail businesses and where they are located. Between the Turk, Tryon, and Holiday Frig events, almost all of them have been made out. This year, Central Passport will extend the seats received, okay? From our businesses, they can win a $500 gift package from global businesses. These activities help to bring attention for many businesses and help to refresh their customer list through S C P marketing efforts. Flemington Borough has some new and current business owner on H B for featured on a Channel 69 TV segment. The borough is, was always prominently featured, the borough was also prominently featured on the cover of New Jersey Municipalities Magazine, which was just a lot. Where I'm actually going to. With the headline story, this Thursday night, the municipality will be awarded the best downtown award and a New Jersey chapter of the Grand Grandness Association. Mayor Driver, S C P, we're also invited to the panel at the downtown community conference this afternoon. I want to say goodbye to Jess Hand. We were the new kids when we ran the first time and I got a, I got a druther on. You're my right hand. My right hand. This is very clear. I know it's on my. Thank you, thank you. And the community garden, we're going to leave a mark there as well. Thank you very much. Mayor Driver, you know, the person is going to be marking this down? Absolutely. Thank you for your hard work. It was a pleasure. Most of the time, I really enjoyed working with you. And you know, you get things done and I think we should all respect that. Thank you.
And then we got to the past week that I tell each other, same class. Next up is a councilwoman.
I want to say to Jessica Hand, I've appreciated all your hard work navigating all the different city events that we need to go through. Thanks again, Jess. And I do look forward to continuing our friendship that I've built during your time at council. Best of everything to you and your family in the future. Mayor Driver, thank you for all the work to move Flemington in the direction of a prosperous future. We didn't always agree, but we found a way to make it work. Best of everything, the year of this chapter of the law.
That did. And doing it as yet.
Yes, can you hear me? Hello?
President.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. I too would like to express thanks to Mayor Driver and Councilperson Jess Hand. We will miss you. I appreciate all your dedication and hard work to the rest of council. I look forward to continuing a good working relationship. I highly respect all of you and appreciate all you do. I did want to also express thanks to Dave Giuliani, our code enforcement official and Fire Marshal Kyma Cormick. I've had the pleasure of interacting with them a lot this past year, communications about the town. And I would also like to express gratitude and to just acknowledge the F C P. I've been really enjoying the holiday decor around town as well as a lot of the events. It was great seeing kids lined up to see Santa on Main Street this last Saturday for pictures. And it's just nice to see all the hustle and bustle around town. So, thank you all.
Good, thank you. And before we go to the first public comment session, I do want to address I skipped over. We did have an executive session earlier where you received legal advice regarding the water stand fight over, over on Shields Avenue. As that work gets wrapped up and contract negotiations with the P B A, that is on the agenda this evening. Other items that we received legal advice on this evening that will have action this evening will be three R D As for Cardinal Capital Development. That's the guitar boy property, Captiva across the street of the Global Light property, as well as the Union Hotel with the minor amendment, third redevelopment agreement, the Liberty Village redevelopment agreement amendment will be tabled due to some questions that came about during the executive session and I decided to table that in. That council and I know the council was going to pick but next year and I appreciate that as well to get that project wrapped up and going. That brings us to our very public comment session. Do we have a microphone for people?
Hi. Gaylord Dallas, 43 Spring Street. On this last council meeting of 2022, I want to thank all the council for your service in Flemington and your work with me directly. Travel, I do want to take a moment for a very special thank, thank you to Council Mayor Jess Hand and Mayor, it's the driver for the last evening. Councilman Jess Hand, it is a joy working with you. A huge congratulations in establishing and progressing a community garden at a nonprofit that is charged with making it all of your work on the environmental council, the system action group, and all the other background source that you know that's taken part in this important thing. Mayor Driver, your passion drives the creation of Flemington is unparalleled. Flemington is a better place because of you. At first, you had seen your work and research and fight for the people of Flemington. It is not the easy. And yet we have all high, higher quality services and development projects because of your leadership. Looking forward and moving the development projects onto my agenda, Flemington is better positioned to address the challenges for the community, stormwater management, recycling process. Very exciting stuff, but very important. A huge part of this is due to the main preference and attraction to the development projects that are in town. These projects marry the charm and history of Flemington while addressing the local economic needs. So through the massive changes in retail environments, the 5,000 closets costs in Flemington and the state of New Jersey low in housing stock, things like that. And it really moves our talents forward and puts us in a better place to be. And I just want to thank you for your service and.
There any other comments from?
When I saw that everybody was in the city, we were awesome. Many adding growth, adding to revenue capital support for Flemington. I just want to say thank you to the current mayor, hopefully the future mayor, past mayor, everyone in the council for the last 30 years that's holding up and helping us bring people, about a thousand, to Flemington. It's a fantastic time of redevelopment. It's made me greatly thank. I feel there's just been a lot more tourism and friends to Flemington. I actually recognize your support and assistance. That is going to be the bottom, written EMS, the E P W, the fantastic work. And maybe the residents and the businesses are very thankful you support. All the best for holidays and next year, see you. Take one better than.
March of Carol, 61 Elwood Avenue, Flemington. I just want to ask a couple of questions. I know the table, I believe it was 2022, 249. I'm not sure about 2022, 248, but 2022, 246 and 2022, 247, both referencing attachment. That is not part of the package regarding this redevelopment agreement. This is not transparent. You are asking the council to vote for something that the public has not seen. This is something you railed about four years ago and five years ago that a prior administration did, Mayor. Like I said, I don't remember if 248 also references an attachment or not, and which 49 does. It's very disturbing that you're getting all this praise and you're leaving on such a low note.
Redevelopment agreements are still happening for the program.
That's not true.
Well, it is recorded. You are.
Okay, you can move that.
Any other public comments?
Well, sure, for each other, Mark, please. It's good to be back. I don't need any more meetings now. I just want to make a comment about the S C P budget that's up for a vote tonight. This town experience the huge setback when that bid was defunded. It sets us back 10 years. So if there's any thought of defunding the S C P at this time, I ask you not to do it. It's incredibly important that they continue the hard work they've been doing. And it is always a big headache. 10 years to get back to where we, we're running back to what officials back then. So I encourage everyone to vote for that.
Any other comments? Anybody online, should you kind of?
Okay, okay, Sam.
Okay. We're going to take this to approval of minutes. First up, we have the approval of the minute. Help me hear my phone. What are the dates on here?
Oh, the regular business from November 4.
And we have a motion to approve the minutes of November 28.
Tell him.
One more second. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
I imagine for creative executive, that's a minute.
Yeah, from November 28.
November 28. I imagine you will put the executive in seven minutes, November 28.
Tell him.
One more second. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. First up is the consent agenda. Do you want to move into sparring? Do you want to pull out the resolutions for Lowe's and their?
I would like to call that, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt resolutions 2022, 242, 243 and 244, all related to redemption of that sales.
Tell him.
One more second. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve 2022 dash 245 appreciation of Lowe's employees for the volunteer contributions to the borough?
And we'll move. So the community garden would not be anywhere right now without Lowe's donating to Happtep Perk Humanity and Happtep Perk Humanity doing a lot of the work. And also Lowe's is continuing to help with the garden beds next year. And we just, we, we really appreciate their commitment to this community.
Hello?
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Yes.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First up is ordinance 2022 dash 30. This is a second reading of public hearing, recommending a fortunately globalized railway redevelopment plan. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Tell him.
One more second.
Public hearing is now open. You have to make a comment, raise your hand and Michael bring over the microphone and ask you to step up to the bar.
Well, this is my little bit of Broad Street. I'm here to address the council concerning your 2022, 30, 40 and 47 of the global hardware redevelopment plan. As many of you know, I have been working with President Trump for a final legacy, three support networks, they can start the high now whenever we come. However, in many conservation companies, I'm not on the side of preservation and it seems to be the good we want to get. The plan being put forward since the historic Lehigh Valley Freeway is listed in the introduction of the document and being marked as historically maintained by the borough and subject to the historical preservation ordinance. However, the division city and the former commission agent as the language previously in development plans, they have the developer needs to make every other possible the work of outside entities to save the building, restore or repurpose the building, cease to advantage. I previously have discussed this in person in the email, but we're represented by the developer in regards to the preservation of the freeway people. And the commercial incentive group is very real to find to save this building in one form or another. So I do need to ask why the change in the language now. It is this change that brings me here to ask the council instead of postponing the decisions, but I would delve out for how the chance remedy is commissioned and possibly work without that entity. While Tom and I and the rest of Operation New Jersey Rails, knowing how failed to beat this preservation plot, we strongly feel that a 30-day postponement is big threat. Another existing group may step forward for the same goal of saving the Lehigh Valley Freeway or the Freeway. Thank you.
There any other comments?
Mayor Driver, we're going to be talking at the Borough Hall, the Mayor Derek Gerlinger, the Deputy Director of Railroad Recreation and City, New Jersey nonprofit organization. We are located at 81 Center Lane, the bar on New York. Hello, Mayor. Mayor Driver, Councilmember, Borough Capital. Railroad Restorations is a New Jersey nonprofit. We're here today specifically for the global highway redevelopment plan. We do join in the request to briefly table ordinance coming to their 30, for 30 days. Uh, that's something so that we can adequately address the specific thing on the prior plan, where there was very specific language with regards to how the depot was to be preserved. Uh, and that's completely stripped from plans. Uh, and that was something that didn't adequately address the building plan itself. So many members of the community, myself included, were not aware of this name of the depot demolition, or what the ultimate plan would be. Now, at the same time, if you want a person to pause the thing, well, they're not a demolish the building, but it doesn't say that. And that's one of the things that we like specifically to be that can be accurately addressed. My group has been involved in railroad preservation now for a little over a year and a half, and I myself have been involved in railroad industry for thirty years. I've currently owned a little motor, passenger car, and two depots. And the project we're currently working on right now is the suburban propane. Uh, he saved in American County, the old Lehigh Valley passenger station, uh, which is now by the nation, type of facility. And the burden has been so far only to work with us and as that's a gang of uh personnel on site. And I complain to someone to give it down to them shortly. But what it's still, the depot's delayed to be able to do that with the folks that are currently doing the way redevelopment project, a place that had reached out names previously. And uh, we are grateful to seeing something that can be reasonably done. But unfortunately, the client needs, we will get time to do that. Typically, not one of those, you know, projects, especially redevelopment projects that are for, uh, and it's important for the borough council, or we considering uh it's hurting the time, thirty days, and putting it into the next year, shouldn't be too difficult to task. Uh, if this part is not, it's an opportunity to at least have a discussion. And that's all we're asking for right now, is the opportunity to have a discussion. Obviously, you know, we prefer cooperation. Uh, it's a pretty good thing. Yeah, if you have the to take with them. I did have a couple of concerns. I think you ought to do a lot of federal regulatory work, particular railroad rail authority. And I was concerned whether or not we're able to, if somebody develops, the state will call federal jurisdiction and then operate. Probably, probably for two thousand nine. At the Sydney Harstons and uh Harstons and Van and Presley, uh, the district area of City. Eight blocks, that's the former railroad that kind of didn't got their eyes and brought their hate on. Uh, it has now been involved in litigation now for almost fourteen years. Uh, it's been curbed up to the DC Perfect Court of Appeals. Uh, it's been well litigated, so we will talk to them, clear your own daughter. I don't expect that difficult, but it's a question that I wanted to ask to the people, or not, that that is adequately addressed to make sure that being that's former railroad property, you can properly extinguish the federal jurisdiction.
Yeah, the needs for the taking care.
That's just a question that we need to make sure it's even addressed. Uh, it becomes a problem that triggers other issues. Uh, and then of course, the final thing, you know, we want to see the, you know, the reconciliation with conflict between the uh the twenty twelve plan and the twenty twenty-two plan. Address that, hopefully. The council will be kind enough to consider granting that, uh, a brief bookworm so that it can be considered in the new year. And we have the ability to do something that would make a reasonable premium based against the time factor. And uh, I don't think this that works, but that's, you know, we just need to work on.
Yeah, I don't think that you're seeing all those there in thirty days. I'll bring up there.
Thank you.
That was Stuart, twenty-six, uh, do you think they're fluent they are? Um, my primary reason for coming out tonight is my concern about that railroad of safety building. It is part of the history of this town. And it breaks my heart to see little by little the history of this town being eroded. And I plead with you to not just say you won't see both those just there in thirty days, but to do something legal way that will prevent the destruction of that building. Uh, I don't pretend to know what that would be. I'm sure that gentleman there would have some suggestions. But please, please, please don't destroy another part of this town. I've been seeing too much, too much. And I can remember getting on that dicky, and that station was over close to the North Main Street and going out to the dungeon and going to the city. It's part of our history. Our history is important. If we don't know where we've been, I don't know that we know where we're going. So please do something to prevent the destruction of that building. Thank you.
There any other public comments? This morning.
Thank you. Elaine Orman, thirty-four New York Avenue, former chair of the historic preservation commission, the Borough of Flemington. I would like to support the prior comments. The freight station dates back to eighteen eighty center with an integral part of this community, which was particularly in agriculture. The uh Little Dicky ran between here and London Junction, where we had no other means, get back and forth. I think that we need to look very closely at our heritage, uh, history, which can be eroded so easily with small deaths. Let's not make this another one of those small deaths. I think that we need to look back at the historic preservation elements in our master plan. I'm sure the council's aware of what that says, and if not, then I'd recommend to it and perhaps take another look, because there are specific things in that ordinance that will protect this building. This is an integral part of our community. So I'm going to ask also, if you all take another look at this, it's not minor to those of us who have been here any length of time, or those who are newcomers and perhaps came because of the historic heritage of this borough which was. So council, please take a very close look at this before you make your decision or have a vote. Thank you.
There any other public comments?
I don't. Yes. Thank you.
I think there are huge, you know, it's a public hearing, you get more than three minutes. Marcha Caro sixty-one O'wood Avenue with Flemington. Um, everybody's talking about the train depot and the inconsistency in the master plan. Um, they claim we're actually found three inconsistencies with this plan, and your planner, two weeks ago, gave a point to the council that this RDA is going to make it very clear and basically lock in what the town does and what the developer does. So this is possibly locking everybody in, and the three inconsistencies, and they were major inconsistencies that were found, was the removal of the train depot, which everybody's talking about tonight. But the other two was the five-story height of the building on Park Avenue, uh, which is currently four stories in the master plan. And most importantly, or as importantly in my opinion, is the fact that the retail area has no parking. Um, I don't know how we're going to chuck anybody to go there on a very dangerous curve down Main Street if there is no parking except for residents. Uh, because there's no parking down on that part of Main Street until you get up to Flemington Floral, or you park um up on Hopewell. So those are three major inconsistencies. Get the plan for founded overall substantially consistent to the master plan. But if this is locking you all in, you really should be looking at those before you get locked in and put this off until next year, or at least a couple of weeks. And really think about how you're going to address the parking situation, the depot, and the height that's inconsistent, and so unfair to the people who live on Park Avenue already. So it's just so terribly unfair to them that they are going to lose their beautiful view of the steeple of the Flemington Presbyterian Church. They're going to lose hours of sunlight every day. Um, they're going to be looking at a brick wall, two stories of parking garage on the first and second floors without any windows. And they're fifteen feet setback from the sidewalk, which is nothing. And they're not getting any element for the community. So what's really sad about this is that the people who don't live here are going to get the beautiful view. They're going to get the sunlight, and they get to enjoy um a little park that specifically your planner said was for the residents of the new development.
That's a public park.
That's not what she said. That's not what she said two weeks ago.
It's a public park.
Well, I, is it, are you positive? Is everything positive? Okay, so there is a public park. Thank you. But the other elements, like I said, people who don't live here are going to get the view, and they're going to get the sunlight. And your constituents who currently live here are losing all of that. And again, those inconsistencies really should be addressed. The depot destruction, the three inconsistencies. Um, number two, the retail parking, and then the height, and bringing it back down to four stories, so those people get some sunlight and some view upstairs on their second floor.
They don't get sunset light, the faces.
I didn't say sunset. I said some sunlight. Please don't interrupt me again there. I'm not interrupting you. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate your consideration and your thoughtfulness about this. These are huge decisions tonight that you guys are all making on this agenda. This is one of the biggest that's going to affect residents that are already here along Park Avenue. Look, I live on the other side of town. It doesn't affect me. But it's a quality of life issue for people who live here now, and the traffic and everything else. And they really shouldn't be rushed. Government works. It just works slowly. And rushing through things at the end of the year, right before Christmas, again, the whole transparency issue, the making decisions that you all with me are going to have to live with for at least the next three years? You know, please, please think about it and make the right decision for the people that live here now and for the history of this borough.
Mr. Fett.
Top of thirty-nine, Mr. New Avenue. I just want to say that on this development, as you know, this area sits in a bowl. So the comparison, the folks on Park Avenue that are already three stories high to this development, it's a little bit, I don't say it's untrue, but um I doubt there's a lot of sunlight that they're losing. We could, whereas there's five stories, it's behind those houses more. I think there's a vacant block right there right now that's also up for, for development. And um, as far as government working slowly, I agree. This area was designated an area of redevelopment in twenty fourteen under Mayor Edwards. It's taken two and two and a half administrations to get us to this point. So the fact that you may all think you're rushing anything, my goodness, it's been seven years. So please, um, I, I agree that there are things that can make this project better, but I don't think taping it for saying makes it better. I can condition some of these uses or conditions of the additions will make a much better project to send that message to the developer that took us six years to track that.
That was Stuart, good to meet you, Mary Ann. I'd like to include in my remarks about my concern about the railroad depot building. And that was the place where many of our young men in this county left to go to fight in World War Two. And I have a picture at home that shows a large crowd of that railroad depot um, sending those young men and fought, and I'm sure some of them might not have come back. So again, it's just such an important part of history, not only our town, but our county. So please, please, please don't let it be destroyed. And then I was not really aware until Marcha Caro said five stories. Everybody that knows me at all knows that five stories, that's I would like out of which is not, it's not appropriate for mine, I mean. And uh, the streams aren't built with this tiny fancy. Um, where, you know, right now it's hard, Park Avenue is central. It will come along for a golden point. They say it's very, the quality, the life, people who live here, um, there's more than living there, and they're all for staying moving.
Eric Schumacher, Railroad Restoration, eighty-one Central Lane, Park Avenue. Uh, I did want to comment to the gentleman who spoke so passionately about wanting to do this particular project uh, moving forward after so many years. And I definitely appreciate the need to uh want to see something that's really come about. But if you don't address the issue of the freight depot in the ordinance uh that it is right now, uh, first of all, if you wanted a condition, I believe uh on your vote today, uh, you recorded, it's a one that changed the ordinance, you defended the notice of ship. Uh, and I come back to the question of is it in your best interest to vote on this now, or it's going to be tabled, so it's part of the direct initiative? And I'd rather see the council voting on something that's mutually read upon by the party. Uh, if nothing else, though, that is going to actually uh see something to be, you know, a tribute. Uh, so we should look to the freight depot. Definitely, we want to have this likely redevelopment project, so not have this early vote to rebuild projects per se. Uh, and I don't have a vote on that particular project, uh, but in terms of the actual uh, preservation of the freight depot, uh, if you vote on this resolution right now, you've basically given a green light for the project where it is with that deficiency. Your only hope, uh, the preservation standpoint, being able to say, I'm back to the table and address that issue one way or the other, and it will I would want to get encouraged, you, you consider giving with their.
Any comments?
I wish you good night on Avenue, um, and also the current vice chair of the Flemington HBC. Um, I was planning a meeting last week where they talked about this. I was very concerned to hear this change is basically allowing to demolish a third building. And so I'm very, very baffled with that meeting plan. That is completely contrary to what planning board had worked on many years. But the, the motion I'm going to plan for is allowing to demolish the building, I think it is. Currently, not a good idea. The um structural report that was done back in April says the building is not yet repaired. So the building still doesn't need to be demolished, it's structural. And it's a small building. Plenty of buildings in plenty of areas have been moved, but all of those on, on our street, they used to be there. So moving a building is not a big deal. So we, we could impose on the government moving the building is not something that we are afraid of. And what I'm concerned about, having it fully explored, at the, at the planning board meeting, um, last week, I made some comment that this doesn't need to go to HBC, which I find strange, knowing how much you were that correct. Um, so I, I agree with, um, I want to briefly say that this should be tabled for the explore, um, saving of the building. And also want to point out that HBC Company of Shering, so by little government, which we can provide um funding and support, things like this. So table it, send it back to HBC, we can talk to JBR. Perhaps the building can be taken. And I've been brushing through, um, this tonight. We've got a long history of brushing through and thinking about this in December and then very later, wherever.
There any comments online? Do we have any countries? There don't get that up there. There any other public comments? We have a motion to close the public hearing. Tell him.
One second.
We have a motion to consider for adoption ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty on second reading and at the public hearing, amending unfortunately the global redevelopment, that way redevelopment is.
Tell him.
One second.
And we do have Beth here. If any council members have questions for Beth, Beth, their work, who can come up and grab a microphone?
Good evening everybody. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, so will you please address the three items that were in the planning board resolution regarding parking, the height and the depot?
Yeah, we have to. So in regards to the, well, first, the comments from the planning board were in regards to comments about the redevelopment plan specifically about. Inconsistency with our end of plan, our building ordinance, and then the three items that are identified. So we need to go order in place of parking. And was, I think was referenced this evening, the redevelopment requires for parking standards for the residential units. And it does not require parking for the non-residential states. And so that is the nature of inconsistency. However, our code, of course, requires parking at quarter. For new non-residential developments at a radio of, depending on use, but this is for a couple of examples. For retail, it's one parking space per two hundred and fifty square feet. Or a restaurant, it's one parking space per three feet. And so that's the nature of the inconsistency regarding this item, the parking item. The second item is in regard to the height. This, this proposal, the redevelopment plan includes two different heights, if you will. There's a multifamily height at a maximum of five stories or sixty feet. And there's a townhouse of the standard, I mean, it's three stories for that amount of forty feet. And those heights are, of course, inconsistent with what is permitted in. Surrounding, surrounding area, as you may recall from the zoning act. This area is largely surrounded by residential residential as well as the single family residential. Those two zones permit an maximum heights of up to thirty-five feet. Those are for, I believe, municipal and school uses, but the single family homes permit an sticker. At a maximum building height of thirty-five feet. And so that's the nature of that inconsistency with, I, I think, that the home family height being. The larger concern is that it means much more than say the townhouses at the four feet. And then the, the third item in regard to the train depot. That, that item, that building with work with one address in redevelopment plan, even perspective of how it's regulated. It does not, for example, require that the building be demolished. Or does it require that it be saved? It also doesn't address any potential relocation. I will say that relocation or otherwise seating or preserving the building is not inconsistent with the redevelopment plan. Would not require special approval, except. For the fact that the redevelopment plan required that the site we developed had gone in the concept plan. Included at the back of the redevelopment plan. So one thing you might not see, you won't see in that plan, is the train depot. So I don't want to suggest that the building can be saved, say, in its. In its current location, for consistency with the redevelopment plan, but there's nothing in the plan that would preclude the borough. And with the developer from relocating the building from this property to another type in the area. And so that's the nature of the third inconsistency or the third item notified by the planning board. Are there any specific questions that I can answer about the developer's development plan?
Good bet. Can you just address them? Because the reason why it's five stories, it has to be with the blood spell is negative.
Yeah, that's part of it. So ultimately, what we've got here is a building that's part, or a site really, that is partially impacted by flood hazard area. And so what that means is in order to incorporate the, the parking on the site as well as the residential units. And we've got to accommodate that flood hazard area. And what that bottom line is, what that resulted, resulting in. Is that the developer is unable to use the front of the ground floor area along Park Avenue for residential, if that would create a flood hazard area. As a result, as you see in the concept plan, is that the parking is located underneath the building in that particular area. The result of that is that the first stories are parking, the other stories are residential. And so you accommodate for that parking and residential, regardless of higher building in that area.
So the original plan, when they first came up, that some of that parking at the ground, which then the new D P star water area, like. No, can't do that. That can't.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
Any other questions for Beth?
It's at least fifteen affordable housing units in the area, right?
It's, it's actually a little bit more than fifteen. It's a fifteen percent set of that of affordable housing units. And so we've got an anticipation of about hundred and eleven units. So that's going to be around seventeen affordable units on the site, which some of them may be, may be reserved for the second needs. Second needs housing goes with the practical municipalities, autism, most commonly autism. So there's an opportunity to provide a mix of family housing as well as second needs housing for the affordable units.
There any other questions for Beth? There any questions for the redevelopment attorney? Go ahead and help us out.
Mr. Shin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zanny?
Yes.
Mr. Sil?
Yes.
Next up is another public hearing. It's a resolution twenty twenty-two dash two thirty-one, second reading of public hearing, budget improvement district. Budget. We have a motion to move it to the floor.
I'll move. Perfect.
Robin? Sure can. Sorry, we don't have any for you.
I'm great. Is there, um. Snow eight. Okay. Can work for this.
It can come up here to the podium.
Hey. Good morning, everyone. Let's get.
Yeah, talking to the mic.
Okay.
How's that?
Good. All right, this is where I, I release the scroll of, of the budget at the time that I concluded that. So I just wanted to give you a few high level remarks. About some of our accomplishments in here and to put something in their perfect. So in the past six years of the current bid, we received an annual budget of three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars every year. That's the main item that you'll see if you're looking at signing budget on the budget. So that is a traditional assessment of taxes spread out among the two hundred plus commercial property owners in the borough. So that's how that week is carried. In the past three years, the F C P has made a return on that investment and raised an additional eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Through improvement grant commitments to help improve our business areas. So three hundred and sixty-three times, six years, including the current year that we're in, is around two million dollars. And we've been able to obtain about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants. And I think that's a great success. So we're using the investment funding to get, to get more money before reinvestment. That said, we raised almost half as much as our budget investment over two period in funds. That can be granted to our businesses and our business areas. We believe that we can continue to obtain grants to make significant improvements to our living environments. During the worst economic crisis of our lives. We survived better than many other downtown areas because we had a bid that had a structure and handitation goals. And relationships and, and ability to do it. Which we did in a lot of, and so, you know, going from. Bangin' the drum to get as many people to come here every minute of the day to wait, you can't come here. But if you showed up at, you know, five o'clock on Thursday, you can't take out food from this person, maybe probably. So I mean, it was, it was really a huge bid. But during that time, we started to have our businesses having great rates. And the result was two hundred and eighty of our four hundred and fifty businesses learned about the beautiful grants. They fly and ones of the five got a, so a significant amount of funding. And the total number of funding received was over twenty-eight million dollars. So I really have to say that the investment of the two million dollars over the past six years. Has ensured that we've been able to reinvest in the business community. And I also want to know that twenty-five businesses have opened in twenty twenty-two or contracted to be open early next year. So we have six new retail businesses that opened on Main Street in twenty twenty-two. Six retail businesses that are under contract to open on Main Street in twenty twenty-two, early twenty twenty-three. And that does include the addition of whatever restaurants, bars, hotels and other retail that comes with the courthouse square projects. An additional five businesses are scheduled to open before the end of the year or early spring. Anything outside of Main Street. And that includes single station, the building, the structure next to Long Island. Which is supposed to open, they just wait before the plumbing and it's supposed to, they are the four tenants coming in soon. In twenty twenty-one, we had a total of fifteen retail businesses that opened in the borough. So while. That may not be how it, how it feels, that's, that's, those are the numbers. This year, we've been able to provide multiple regrants to businesses. We have supported our businesses with. I need glasses, I'm sorry. Twenty-seven thousand dollars in curb to corner and crew maintenance businesses on Main Street. So whether you've been clearly like Barkley's new sign and you look, you probably noticed. The corner and the kombucha bar got a, got a base lift. And we've been able to throw these fifteen hundred dollar grants around. In Dickon, we were able to give twenty thousand dollars in residential crew bank grants, which is. A feature of the N P D neighbor conservation program grants that we got. And we were able to give fifteen residents one thousand dollar improvement grants. I wish you could get more for a thousand dollars these days, but you know, every little bit helps and it really does help to make a difference. And it is sort of like that. It's, it's one, you know, one landscaping improvement, one not broken fence or window. We were also able to get twelve sign bring stories. And twelve event grants to our businesses. We had a new mural wall painting, which I hope you've all seen by a local artist. And we restored the groundhog kiln, which was just forgotten and covered in brush. And we created an open air gallery that is actually open twenty-four seven for a moment of our homes. And it will feature four to six shows of its artwork, so we printed out vinyl. So that it can be at a time. And when the show is over, we take the vinyl and we transfer it in vacant storefront windows, you know, to help move this improvement around. We also had a walk audit so that we could figure out where the tripping hazards and the well hanging branches were. And we were able to make eight thousand dollars worth of improvements. In the South Bend district. So, you know, I proposed my budget then by telling you that because we, we're, we work hard. And we don't always toot our own horn. But this year, we were very lucky because the media toed our horn for us. And the final thing is, you know, they called us the best nation in twenty twenty-three. So I think that our potential does not go unnoticed. We also received one of the best call towns by several leader. They have sixteen million readers. And, you know, it's, they believe that London should be one of the twelve towns that they, you know, drive from New York or however they get here. That, that really matters to our businesses. I can't even tell you how much it matters to have positive press for this borough. It is so important because the people coming here to shop, to dine, to find attractive things to do. To take in the sixty-five percent of the audience on the national register. They don't want to know our, our problems. They just want to come and know where they're going to eat and how wonderful their experience is going to be. So. Our budget is different from last year to this year by fifty-three thousand dollars. Which is my confidence level that if we're allowed to continue to have events like we have in the past. We will have sponsors. Sponsors have come back. Our sponsors, our business sponsors, we believe in what we're doing. So I think that above the three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, which is a regular amount that we get a year over the years. I feel confident that we can raise fifty-three thousand dollars more of that. I anticipate spending of the difference, forty-seven thousand five hundred. Leaving us with like a five thousand dollar differential. Because you have to plan that way. And if we don't raise the sponsorship, we won't spend that money. So I can go one by one. No? Okay, I can.
I don't know what to do. Next, give us some highlights. Okay.
So we, we've had staffing problems and we outsourced our marketing, which was really had great results. And we're working with a great firm called Suasion. I think some people have met them at one of our state holder events. We plan to continue to work with them. It's, it's as if I have a full time marketing staff currently. And we plan to do, you know, we do forty-three thousand dollars in advertising. That's not a lot of money, really. You know, and add can be a thousand dollars for a quarter page in a newspaper. So forty-three thousand is not that much. We have seventy-two thousand dollars in our street tape improvements budget. We pay ten thousand dollars in a non-drought year for plant water. And, you know, the, the, the cost of doing this is, are, it's, it's expensive. So we bought a few new hallway decorations this year that I hope people have noticed and some boxwoods and some boughs. And we, let's see what else we can add again. You know, our administrative costs continue to go up, the zimmer continues to go up. All the, many of the new tools that we have to use are just increased. And I, I do, I feel the need to apologize to the rock and flowers that we had this past year. Really unfortunate, the drought didn't help. And we're working with another new grower who's local and has a pretty good reputation. And we'll, we'll do everything in our power to try to avoid that because I know, I know everybody notices this. And we feel bad when it, when it, when it's not pleasing. Any other questions or?
Don't go away. It's not to let anybody. I'm not going. We have a motion to open the public hearing part of this.
Long. Perfect.
Are there any comments from the public or questions for the public hearing part of this process? Are there any comments from the public or questions for the public hearing part of this process?
One, sorry, yeah. Rob, could you please tell me whether to stay rate or hungry that the businesses are taxed this year and not second year, year?
That's a good question, Lois. Uh, it's always the same. It, it equals three hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. And Bill or someone else who does tax, that's definitely would be better at explaining how that works out.
Well, I don't know how much. My business is worth five thousand dollars. That guy's worth ten thousand. There's more businesses coming in. Well, that actually. Spread the cost of your three hundred plus thousand budget of the war that. Rate for a hundred dollars of the second should go down. I'm asking for what is the comparison. I mean, this budget is anything and what the budget was for the past few years.
So the budget number, the number that's collected is always the same. It's three hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. How that is um. Individually assessed to each commercial property owner. Where do people get the bill? Is based on calculation of their assessment. Um, and the number of that fee. Um, and that's how I understand the whole shit. I'm asking for the rate that they are sent. Hundred dollars per second. What is the minimum rate of reaching a one one straight in Flemington? Based on our set value and that equals the amount of taxes to the burden. I would like to know what the rate is for the businesses for this, for this budget.
Bill?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, good question.
I can't understand what she was saying. No, what was the question?
What is, what is the assessment rate that support uh, business, uh, commercial properties? It's not really businesses, commercial properties. What is the assessment rate for a hundred dollars?
For, oh, for the commercials only that.
Well, then those are the only folks paid for the F C P.
Correct. Um. That's more of an Ed Kirwin question. I'm not sure of the answer of that because it, there's two different districts and I think they. They pay different rates depending on the two districts in, in this bid.
Thanks. Well, I, my, my understanding is that each building may not have a different rates. Each property has a different rate. And there's two general buckets. One bucket is Main Street and Sango. And I know area and then over the highway, they pay slightly less.
Yeah, the highway retail and the uh, super traffic overlay over there by uh. The shops are funny and they pay a reduced uh, less than the Main Street that is the big, the big fan of it as well.
Well, I just think it's strange that we would be considering a budget and not know how much this has cost in the business. You know, as a comparison, but they pay for new businesses coming in, there should be a. Yeah, but it doesn't change. It's, it's a ordinance on select commercial properties. And that, the ordinance hasn't changed over time. So the amount that we get is the same amount. And that's, that's a bigger conversation, but at the moment, it's three hundred and sixty two thousand dollars divided by. However, many, if a, if a property is demolished, we, we lose somebody from our tax hole. Uh, I guess.
About the building on St. Michael's one, the business is coming in, well, that should.
I can't hear you.
I agree. That's a new building that has, is not currently on our tax hole. So this should be a food thing that we look at year to year.
So if we get more businesses coming in than the high.
It's building, it's vertical properties. It's not a mental property.
Commercial properties coming into the borough. Then the three hundred plus thousand high should be split into more segments. So that each section would pay less. I don't understand. You say you're paying the same. They should not be paying the same every year to all more.
So that, you know, Lois, if I had my brother, she'd have another hundred thousand dollars in that budget. That brings out the commercial properties because the F C P is incredibly successful. At getting business to the parent and how to perhaps help with that, but I'll do that next year.
I'm not questioning the value of the organization. I'm asking how much. Is that, that just like our set value on our properties that we pay into the town budget. Changes based on the change when we assess value of all the properties. I would think that same premise would apply to this organization. And I just don't understand why nobody knows how that changes.
Are there any other questions or comments? Are there any answers online?
Yes.
Alan?
Hi. Hi, this is Ally Norton. I live at twenty nine East Main. I own the corner at fifty two Main Street.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, I just wanted, I, I am the treasurer of the F C P and also a small business owner. And I just wanted to call in with my support of the budget and the work that F C P is doing. Um, the help that we're giving to other businesses and selfishly or more like I can speak from experience. The grant support, the P R support, the marketing support. Um, it's incredible to be a small business and get the support from the F C P that would be. Uh, impossible for me and my fellow business owners to do on our own. Um, and the, the ability to get help with um. Funds for improving our signage or facades, for getting support for the N G, N J E V E. Um, grant money to help continue further our business. Um, it's immeasurable and I, I just wanted to call in and, and share my support. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Do any other comments online?
No other questions.
Does our council have any questions or comments for our?
I have a question.
We still have public care. We can either do it on the motion and, let's close the public care. We're motion to close the public care.
What rule?
We have a motion to adopt. The F C P budget.
What rule? For a second.
Okay, it's on the court.
All right. So I'm looking at your budget that you presented to us. And on here, and as your earned revenue for your events has increased from twenty seven thousand to forty five thousand. Which just don't have to be anything. It's a eighteen thousand dollars. So can I say you're claiming that your event is part of your daily experience along? Uh. If you're presuming that your revenue for your events has been increased.
So this is a budget. It's not actual. So we're looking at budget numbers and not actual numbers. So there, there is an actual loss. Of, because our expenses were about fifty three thousand dollars. And we took in about thirty five thousand dollars and therefore we had that loss. So that's, that's more information than you really need to know at the budget hearing. Because the difference in that number is um, that we feel confident. That we'll have more sponsorship. I mean, we're coming in a good direction. But we, at the um, at the rates that these events cost us. With police bills and D W bills and um, everything. It's a cost of everything. It's just ridiculous. Public, personally, you're lucky if you can get a public rest, a quarter body. And then the cost of a court party is absurd. So everything is absurd. But our costs are now about fifty three thousand dollars for an event that has eighteen thousand people in attendance. But that, this is a budget number. It's not the actual number. No, I understand that, but aren't we taking those active numbers into effect to create your budget? We do. And we anticipate that we will have more revenue in future, in future events. And we hope that we will have less expenses. That confidently can tell.
Or even have less expenses if everything, the loss of everything keeps going up.
Because are you even asking for you to have more events that have been planned, that have more given in for months? Uh, everything, you know, we, the board knows certainly about it. We, we. We learned a lot this past year. As everyone knows, you get, you didn't have a corny made of beer event since twenty nineteen. So two years went by before, between our last event and this event. And it was considerably more expensive, just like, just like gas. When gas was more expensive, everything else would be more expensive. So it was more expensive. And now we will evaluate what really we should, which events should we do? We list them and what? Because we anticipate that we will do them again and that these are the um, the revenue in these senses we expect. I expect that we'll have more sponsors again because more businesses are coming back out of a lot of. Attend public events and have a name visible.
So that's different than the sponsors required when you have your budget? Yeah, I believe it would be. So then you're including five, six, you're running. Your back running low? Yeah. We have, yes.
I could maybe the clarification here would be, you have your, you have your budget. You have your budget, right? And so from your budget, if you look at your expenses, so this, I just wanna make sure that you, that everyone's clear. The expenses itself is, you're saying that it went from one fourteen budget. And you're budgeting to one thirty six. And you're budgeting that the, the revenue is gonna be from five nineteen to five seventy two. Does, I just wanna make sure, does the expense, does, is the expense number an accurate number? Or is it a number based upon the percentage of, and I don't mean accurate, I'm sorry, I don't mean that. But is it based upon the, I'm, I'm trying to understand how you came up with the expense number. Because I think that's what's really important to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a jam, right? And so that you make sure that you make the revenue that you're trying to get. So I just wanna make sure the expenses are spot on.
So we, we, when we do our budget and we look at actual numbers from the past three years, you even have tabs.
Rolling three years, okay.
You have tabs in the document that you receive that show where, you know, what happened in the past. Again. You know, it's really, we haven't had this event since twenty nineteen.
Forget about that event. Just talk about overall.
So. Budget is aspirational in that we think we will be able to raise more money. In sponsorship and rev, and event revenue. That means, you know, targeting vendors or um, selling T-shirts, selling beer. Selling cocktail, whatever it is that we shut.
So, but again, so is, is, as you said, a rolling for years, it's also your revenue projection, a rolling for years as well? Because that would make sense to me. Okay, so it's a rolling for years on the revenue and a rolling for years on, on the, on the expenses. Is, is there a formula for the percentage of increase for, for those rolling years? So for instance, when I do a budget for work, I do it for a rolling for years, which I think that's great. And if I'm giving people what their budget is gonna be, it's basically on a percentage that I see in terms of what's gonna happen, right? So is that, this is percentage.
We, so.
I just wanna make sure.
We are asking for the three hundred and sixty, we're asking to approve the same three hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. That we got in your, your.
Exactly, the visitors.
However, I am telling you that based on my experiences, I'm confident that we will have more revenue. That more earned revenue that we can earn this year over last year. And as, as we have listed here, we have a number of. Business events with, we break it out, you know, Flemington flea. Um, in the past, we have Flemington flea. We have a lot of antique stores. We don't have as many antique stores right now. It's, so I put zero in there. Until our antique stores are more, until we have more. And then more will need to help us do a productive event. So, you know, at the beginning of the year, the board will work with me to. Optimize which events we should really do and um. You know, at, at what, how can we economize? Are there ways? We had a lot of staff this past year, mostly so that I wouldn't fall on my face with exhaustion. Doing this event for thousands and thousands of people. And we basically came up with a lot of models that we were going to replicate for the next event. So some of this funding is investment funding, where we're learning how to do it better. And, but, you know, overall, is it, is it a successful investment of the F C P dollars that we know we're gonna get? I would say yes.
I, I don't, I don't have any question about the F C P dollars. I guess I just want to hear your say. That we, that the expenses are spot on, right? And I guess the second part of that, the second thing is that. Are you saying that all the businesses that are in Flemington don't necessarily participate? In the events? Is that a true statement?
That is true.
And why would that be?
Um.
From your experience.
Some of them are very small and very busy and it's really hard for them to get outside their own door.
Got it.
Um, and you know, we try to, like, with the holiday, you have sports, finding the way that they don't have to do anything. For us to promote them.
Got it, okay.
But large events are hard because it, you know, already taxed small businesses. Are not always able to move their operations outside of their front door.
So are you, so, so with those businesses, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to really get aggressive. I'm sorry, I don't like what's up. I'm just trying to get it to reach, but, uh, uh, so the smaller businesses that don't have. The, the. The bandwidth to come to an event. What, isn't there something that we can do for them, whether they're on Main Street or Main Street or whatever street would be to draw attention to that? To help get that, this number up, to, to get them involved. Because I guess I get, I get concerned when there is not all businesses involved. And it's the same old business involved, right? Which is not that. But, but if we're going to expand community thought, then we gotta get all businesses involved.
The, these are um, the courageous conversations that we really need to have as a group about. What, what events, what events do the businesses and the townspeople want us to have? Where should we have them and how do we engage people? And who, you know, how, how do we manage the finances? Because they are, they are, even before we um, start. You know, we probably spent twenty five thousand dollars just on the, on the setting. Just on being a happy event.
Right. I, I can, I can table this for later, but I think one of the other ways that you can actually find out what people really want is to go survey. It's just that it, it works every single day. Yeah, that would be my suggestion. I'll just throw that into your pile. Thanks.
Do any other comments or questions for the council?
I have no final comment. But obviously, I've been looking at the actual spending on your events. And I've seen a lot of simple accounting and a whole lot of unaccounted over. I'll just end it there.
Well, we welcome all courageous conversations about our, um, dignity and our empathy with the community, uh, business community and the resident community, what they want from us. And how they want on some proceeds, so, um, I hope to have more of those conversations.
Thank you, Rob, yeah.
Thank you, Rob.
Go ahead and tell.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillman?
I guess something that people won't know on this one.
Yes.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us, Mr. Hand. Next up is Resolution twenty twenty two, death three thirty nine, approving the PBA contract for the period twenty twenty three through twenty twenty five. If we could have a motion?
What move?
Still wait a second.
Uh, Jerry, can you give us the headlines?
Yeah, uh, last we met, we had discussed this, uh, the contract for the PBA. Uh, we decided to table it, um, because we wanted to look at some, uh, there was this one item we wanted to, uh, rectify and we were able to do so. Just the, just the landing game, we got, we got out for which one? The days and the, the specific landing. Yeah, no, that's fine. So, um, the, the contract before had a two week cancellation, um, issue. If, um, a non-remunerated entity had canceled an event, um, the, um, the police department on behalf of the, um, PBA members were able to charge, uh, the subject of the matter. Um, so that is moved to from two, two weeks to one week. And that is moved, and that is also expanded, what items should be excluded? Um, pandemics, um, other acts of God in there to make it feel more fair. The police department has been very fair, uh, in the past, in, um, in, in, um, making these types of charges. So, um, it, it, it felt like that was the right move for the, for the new contract. Some of the soft ones we have on the list.
Thank you, Eric. There any other comments or questions? Go ahead and tell them.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that brings us to Resolution twenty twenty two, death two forty six. I see, uh, Andy is coming in safe, right? Uh, authorizing redevelopment in the area of Flemington and kept even main street area review levels. If we could have a motion?
Still waiting.
One more second.
Andy Brewer, organizing Andy Brewer after expecting redevelopment, uh, Mary C. Del Home. And he is here to give people the headlines. And this has been, it's got directed with the council, run your, uh, isolated advice and effective session with Jerry West.
Thank you, thank you, Mary, and, uh, let me just get everybody. Uh, Andy Brewer, redevelopment, trying to develop, that's all. Um, this redevelopment, um, the redevelopment developer went to Flemington for PDCA. So they have a second plan approval, um, this is the third before, uh, and then the government body. Same word, knowing what it is, under unit, um, under units in two local counties, knowing one has, if you know, one has thirty eight. Um, there is obligation to comply with the affordable housing plan that will be a open, ongoing sound for development. Um, the provision that they will completely, you know, to put that down for the sewer issues, um, with Kerry Harrison and, um, the government body in all areas, and also contributed hundred twenty five thousand dollars to work with our plan, uh, creation. Um, and then this is to pay, uh, you know, they, there is a requirement, um, that they, uh, make any changes, they're going to go back, uh, to the government to give you the changes. Will they go back to Flemington, make any changes? They're also using being, um, financially, that's, that's why the, this is the redevelopment agreement that implements, um, they're, they will need to move forward before they get to pay, so I'm working with the redevelopment. They need a designation and need a contract with, um, with the governing body. And that's, it's, it's the time, or that was they have to go forward with developing. Um, then again, by the affordable housing, there's the usability, uh, and by the second, if you have any stupid question that they're here to bring, that will be part of the development.
I don't have a question, but for the benefit of those, um, watching, this is a particularly difficult site to develop. It's kind of got that weird elbow over it. It also unfortunately has, uh, a culler running down the property on it. This is the global avenue property, by the way, where they retail the store always. Um, it is not going to be easy, B to get A, you'd be able to remove that culler. And normal would be an expensive endeavor to get that culler moved out of there. So that's how when we put these together, and, you know, these guys have been in Flemington, we've been working with them for four years. That is not rough, this is really something that's been coming up. Yes, that, when it seemed like it was rough, this is the last meeting of the year, but it has to happen. Any questions or comments for any of the council? Go ahead and tell them.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Ms. Tillman, sorry.
Yes. Thanks, Andy.
Uh, next up is Resolution twenty twenty two, death two forty seven. It's another redevelopment agreement, authorized redevelopment, pretty funny capital, target capital. And I'm, but this is the natural second set, towards that for the redevelopment plan. And again, these things have been kind of being developed and worked on in tandem. Uh, if we could have a motion? Still waiting.
Hold on a second.
Andy?
I think, um, this is another redevelopment in the global avenue area. Um, this project is not, not to the second plan approval, this may be more yet. Actually, we're bringing it in concept form, uh, the concept is a hundred apartment, uh, eleven ten houses. Uh, once again, the developer will comply with, uh, your, this power is obligation to provide affordable housing, generate seventeen percent of the monthly fees on your affordable housing consultant. To ensure that that compliance is paid. Um, there are some, there's been other benefits, we use value on the five hundred thousand dollar. Um, they're going toward, uh, by a safety or by a buy. Um, along with four thousand dollars to address the sewer problems in that issue. Uh, again, this is contingent upon, uh, negotiation of a financial window. Um, and before this project can go to the planning board, they'll have to come to this, do a new approval of the actual second plan that we have. So there's a new concept of the numbers here, it's going to be, like, before they actually go to the planning board. They'll have to find out who on those plans they're working. Again, it's the same, uh, framework for redevelopment, there are schedule for, uh, some, well, some things for them to do, what the things will be made. Um, but that's, that's really what this is going to be all in. I bet coverage of this area, and portion of the whole line, whatever.
Any comments or questions? Go ahead and tell them.
Sam?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillman?
Yes.
Yes.
Next up is Resolution twenty twenty two, death two forty eight, authorizing the amendment, uh, the redevelopment agreement between Flemington and Flemington Center, reviewing all this as an amendment to the standing agreement that we have to be given out. If we have a motion?
Still waiting.
Hold on a second.
And finally, the minor amendments to the, to the circular, Ryan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, uh, as I, as I said to you before, all agreements are important. Um, this is the minor changes that would be existing. Uh, redevelopment with Flemington Center, I don't know, which, uh, maybe now with the hotel, uh, and some of the development that would be going around there. Um, the, the, and, and obviously at some point, we're moving. This agreement provides exactly where some of the parking will be, uh, service spaces that will be permitted to be used by, uh, the police department. There's, you know, for a group, um, it provides where parking will be for the hotel and other customers. It also provides that, um, they'll be, they'll have an access, um, they were positive to, they were getting made sure these things be, they were, um, this all is this specific line, where is parking going to be? Who has access to within that the problem specifically, that is being handed to the existing redevelopment agreement. So that extent, I need to say that relatively minor changes, which is, that's a thing to make it clear.
Any questions or comments for Andy? Go ahead and tell them.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillman?
Yes.
Yes.
Next up is Resolution twenty twenty two, death two forty nine, which is authorizing the amendment of redevelopment agreement for Flemington and Liberty. Uh, I'm going to ask the council to, uh, to bring a couple of tables there.
I move to table, Resolution forty forty two to forty nine.
Still waiting, sir. So that's, uh, being tabled because there was some question about some language regarding historicity actually made. And so students who spoke before that. Um, so that's the major is the whole of that. Uh, so then go ahead and tell them the table.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillman?
Yes.
Okay, this is the table.
Next up is Resolution twenty twenty two, death two, linking up the rest of the CFO to take bills for the last twenty twenty two bills.
Still waiting.
Hold on a second.
Can you give us the headline on this, Ryan? Thank you, Andy.
Yes, uh, just to make sure that, uh, any bills that are scheduled for pay, uh, which was passed. Uh, of which, once the resolution happened, we weren't paying any, uh, other bills that were predicted would get paid this year or this year. Um, which, just making sure that we can pay the bills.
Thank you.
Go ahead and tell them.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillman?
Yes.
Yes.
That brings us to our second public comment section. Anybody would like to make a public comment?
Uh, Frank, man, this is seven, right, with the project. Uh, I'm a tenured employee of the borough. I just want to thank the council for, for premiering our contract, it really means a lot to us. This is our second contract, uh, to negotiate our exportation, which is kind of exciting to me. And you really appreciate it, and it helps you to care about us. Uh, so thanks to, to the corporate administrator, Mike Humphries, uh, the councilwoman, Ken Tilling, and the council president, Cheryl Long, for their, uh, the public. Once again, just thank you, appreciate it.
We do.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion to add bills? Go ahead. Do we have a motion to add bills?
Can't go both.
Johnson, sir.
Oh, you have a very cheap word? Oh, yeah, just very briefly, an update on, uh, at the last meeting, I let you know about those properties, uh, owned by uh, Worsel Properties and, and, um, where they're looking to build townhouses, they're down on Coker Avenue, that is the issue where their, uh, properties actually extend this way, leading to rare confection. But rare confections have no record of the ownership of the properties, they don't tax them, they don't have access. And, um, so I've been in contact with Rare Confections, I mean, and his, or their governing body, they are meant to working out a agreement to essentially adjust the boundary line between the municipalities. And we will, uh, the first thing you'll see, we both municipalities are going to, um, do an escrow agreement with the developers that the process will just get formed by the developer. And it there will have to be, um, agreements struck and or then it's done for just the property. And that will, uh, that process will start in, in twenty twenty three. Thank you.
Now, do we have a motion to base this?
End of the vote. Still waiting.
Of course, I, uh, we do.
Oh.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Zeddy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillman?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
End of the vote.
Yes, yes. Everyone wants to turn?
No, I guess, I was using the best possible time.